Welcome to the April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings in the Centennial Building at twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, an invocation will be given by Father Tim Baer of Grace Church here in Yukon, and following the invocation, we will have the flag salute. Father Baer.
Y'all stand and pray with me. Let us pray. Most holy and gracious God, I give you thanks for this day. Thank you for our community, for the many people that live here in Yukon. We give you thanks for our city council and for all of our city employees and for all the hard work that they do on the behalf of their people. We ask that you'd guide this time tonight and watch over us and continue to help shape us to be your people and a community that rests in your love and your grace. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call call please.
McCarron.
Here.
Smysterla. Russell.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Yanda.
This evening, we have in our presentations and proclamation the recognition of service for two folks who have given a lot of their personal time over the years and have been very good, outstanding members of our city council. So, members Alberts and Russell, would you join me down front, please? Just like everybody to give both of these guys a really big round of applause. I I have served with John and Richard, John for the last six, seven, six years. Richard certainly the last four. And I just want everyone to know what good, fine, upstanding people both of these gentlemen are. They give of their time and their service for no money and a lot of grief and come up here every day and try to make sure that when we meet, this business of the city is properly taken care of and things are done the right way. So with that, I would want to hand, first of all, Mr. John Alberts. John has been the mayor here in town. He has served on the council for fifteen years.
Two thousand and two.
Since two thousand and two. Yeah, some of the folks in this room aren't even that old. I don't know. But I couldn't say.
I was thirty-six when I started. I'm fifty-three now.
And as well, Mr. Russell, for the last four years of your time, I really appreciated you being here for me as well as the other council folks, certainly being outspoken when you needed to be. And so, once again, I would like for, first of all.
Any comments? I would just like to thank the citizens of Yukon for giving me the opportunity to serve you. It's been an experience, some ups and downs, but I think where we're really to be now. I just want to thank everybody for this opportunity.
Likewise, I just thank you to the different staff and to the community for giving us this opportunity to serve. And it's been a lot of fun. I mean, there was a time or two then we had to make some really hard decisions. And I'm glad that this group of people were here. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to serve with these council members and the ones before. And Jim and Tammy and all the staff, I appreciate you guys and it makes it easy for us. We come here and, you know, meet for a couple of hours and work out. You guys are the ones where the rubber meets the road and that's really helpful. And, you know, I thank you to my family. They, it wasn't always fun for them. Sometimes it was a little bit difficult, but I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity. I've had a lot of fun and I think that, I think Mr. Crosby reported that we've got five point six million dollars back in our reserve. So I think we leave here today, Richard and I, that was a goal of ours is to get the money back in the reserve and to get us back on some firm financial footing. I think we're going to get a good report about our numbers tonight. So I can talk on and on, but I'm proud to have done this and I appreciate the opportunity.
And that was a big amen from Richard on the right side here. Once again, let's give all of them, both of them, a big round of applause. Both of them for serving. Next section is our visitors' section. This section is for proceedings, is for our visitors who would like to come and address the city council on a non-agended item. Do we have anyone this evening?
No requests to me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to say on a non-agended item? Thank you very much. We will now recess as the Yukon City Council and convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one A on the agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. City manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April the third, two thousand and eighteen, B, payment of material claims in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, ninety-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. A motion and second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item two A is presentation and acceptance of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Heim, I think, I think this is the appropriate place and time for you to come forward and present to us.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Lonnie Heim with HBC CPAs, here to present the audit of the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand and seventeen financial statements. Normally what I do when I present the financial statements to boards and councils, I kind of give them, give you an overview of what, you know, what the financial statements contain. In this case, page five and six are our auditors' report on the financial statements. And then page seven through sixteen is the, this management's discussion and analysis of the financial statements as they relate to things that are reported in the financial statements. And, you know, mainly that, those, the MDA contains commentary about the financial statements and some of the happenings within governmental, government-wide financial statements are on page eighteen through nineteen. Governmental statements, twenty-one through twenty-four, and business-type activities are on twenty-six through twenty-nine. So then in the notes, follow those statements. And I'll direct your attention to a couple of the notes and that you might have an interest in as the board of governance for the city of Yukon. So, so the first thing that I'll go over is our independent auditor's report on page five and six. And the key wording in the report is down at the bottom of page five. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly. And so those are the key words. Again, it's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. We didn't find any exceptions that would cause these financial statements to not be in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. And thus, we are issuing an unmodified opinion on those. And then there's some discussion about the other information, other reports that we issued in accordance with government auditing standards on page six, yeah, on page six. But mainly, bottom of page five is the key to our report, so.
So you're telling us at this point that we had a clean audit, is what you're telling us?
Yes, yes, yes.
No substantial deviations or any kind of a thing that we need to be made aware of?
That's correct, that's correct, yeah. I don't know how much time we want to spend on the MDA, but, you know, on page, top of page eight, there's some financial highlights that talk about how the net position of the city increased by eight point three percent. The city, for budgetary purposes, there, you were, you were under revenue estimates in terms of your budget, but you were also way under your expenditure estimates on, on the budget. So it, revenue estimates were under by four point eight, expenses or expenditures were under by four point four. So basically, I'll wash. Page eleven, I think is, bottom of page eleven, I think is a very important point and one that probably everyone is interested in, and that is that current assets increased thirty-four percent. And that was mainly due to an increase in one point, of one point seven million. And I like the wording that management uses here. An increase of one point seven million due to a conscious effort by the city to increase those, or those reserve accounts, so. Restricted, restricted net position on the statement of net position increased by sixty-three percent. That's over on page twelve, about the middle of the page. Current assets of the business type funds increased thirty-six percent. And unrestricted net position increased by eighty-three percent, by one, one million dollars, so. On page thirteen, and again, I go over the management's discussion analysis because it gives you a pretty good insight into what happened during the year. But on page thirteen, comparison of revenues and expenditures current year to prior year. But at the bottom, you can see there's, there were some decreases. One being operating grants and contributions decreased twenty-seven percent. That was really due to the FEMA disaster recovery funds that were received in the prior year and those weren't, of course, needed in the current year. So capital grants and contributions decreased by seventy percent. And that was mainly due to the ODOT money that came in in two thousand and sixteen on the Cornwell and Northwest Tenth construction. Cornwell from Northwest Tenth divestment, so. And that was about a six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar grant, so, or revenue stream. So that was not there in two thousand and seventeen. So those are kind of the highlights. I guess down at bottom of page fifteen, you know, police capital improvements increased point four million. Technology improvements, there was point two million spent on technology improvements. So that's kind of the overview. Probably in the notes, you might be interested in the capital asset note, and I won't go over it, but on page thirty-eight and thirty-nine, there's an analysis of, you know, the assets that were purchased during the year. Page forty-one through forty-four is an analysis of the long-term debt of the city and what, what was, what additional debt was taken on in two thousand and seventeen. So then, as far as our reporting is concerned, we jumped back into it on page eighty-nine. And this is our report on internal control and compliance with laws, laws, regulations, contracts, and other things. And this is a byproduct of, of, you know, our audit of the financial statements and things that we look for when we're auditing the financial statements. So, you know, we had a discussion last year about what our findings were. The city has done a good job of bringing forward a lot of information in the past two years about things that the city has found. And so, some of these findings are the result of, of work that the city has done to try, to try to kind of clean things up, if you will. Last year, we had six findings. This year, we have two. One was really self-reported in the financial statement, so I'm not sure, you know, I go back and forth on whether we even need to include this because it's included in the notes and that has to do with the budgeting. And that would be finding number two thousand and seventeen dash two. The other finding that's still, still out there, and I visited with Chris and Mark who were out on the job, you know, the majority of the time, and they, they indicated that, and this, this finding has to do with integrating the accounting of the trustee banks into the accounting records of the city. And so, you know, the city has made a lot of progress. And they felt with the progress that's been made that this finding will go away in two thousand and eighteen, so. The findings that did go away, we discussed probably at length last year. I don't know that I, you know, I don't want to go over each of those because they're, they're kind of in the past, but I do want to say something about the, you know, there was some discussion about the finding number two thousand and sixteen fifteen, or two thousand and sixteen dash five, it's on page ninety-five. And that had to do with the reserve funds. And so, we left that finding in there last year and there was some probably discomfort with it. But the position we were in last year's auditors, things were going on early in that fiscal year that caused us to, to report that finding. This year, we're happy to report that the funds are building up. There's no other, there's no activity, you know, in those funds that where they're being used for anything. So they continue to build up, which is what the intent, and the, and the finding was not that you haven't achieved the twenty-five percent, but rather the finding was that you're not supposed to be using the money without council approval until it achieves, you know, until you reach the twenty-five percent. So, so we've removed that finding because we know, we, we did an analysis and, you know, there was no withdrawals from that fund.
Are we at the twenty-five percent level?
I don't believe you're at the twenty-five percent at this point.
How close are we?
You are now, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, this, of course, you know, we're dealing with something that was nine months ago, so.
But this is as of nine months ago, we were not, yes.
Not quite, yeah, not quite. That's, that's a great thing if you've achieved it now, so.
Yeah, we had.
That's, that was a pretty rapid turnaround.
Some good business yet. I'll ask Mr. Crosby to comment on here in a minute.
Okay.
But.
So anyway, that is our report and.
I do, I do have one short question for you. On the, how do you feel we are on our pension plans right now? When I looked at some of those numbers in there, I was, I'm a little slow on picking up some of that, so.
Yeah, I, I may have to defer and I may have to get back because I don't really, it might take me five minutes to find that number. I don't remember.
Well, sometime tonight, you know, with.
Yeah. Frank, you, have you, do you have?
Frank was there.
I'm going to defer to Frank because he's.
Gave us some information on the.
Yeah, and, and he's involved in the hearing close, so.
Your, your pension system is about eighty-one percent funded. The way they measure it now is different than the way they measured it prior to two thousand and fifteen. The accounting rules kind of changed on us in two thousand and fifteen and literally changed the way that we measure how pension systems are funded. The eighty-one percent that you're at right now, although in my model of scoring, I don't, I don't give that a good score in the performatory because I want it to be a hundred percent funded. But eighty percent is very functional. In other words, pension systems are designed to operate and sustain themselves at about eighty percent funding. So you've been at eighty-one percent two years in a row now, by the way. So you're not, your pension liability's not growing, but it's not, it's not advancing either, but.
It's not deteriorating.
As long as you continue to make a hundred percent of your required payments into the system and then as long as the system uses and invests that money to earn about seven and a half or seven point seven five percent on a, on a long-term basis, the plan funds itself mathematically. I mean, it can't not work if those two things continue to, to happen. So I'm not terribly concerned at an eighty-one percent funding. I'd like it to be better, but it will be over time as long as the investment returns are there and the city funds a hundred percent of its required contributions, so.
Well, we've got a lot of people that would like to retire with a pension.
Well, then, I would, I would say your pension system is relatively well-funded at eighty-one percent, so.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
And I think those numbers, you know, bear out in the, if you look on page seventy-two and then page seventy-four, you know, there's, it gives you some statistics on, on the funding. You know, the pension plan probably, I'm sure they had a good year with the market as it is in seventeen, so I'm sure that increases, a lot of that had to do with the positive things that were going on in the investment world, so. And, and, you know, that's, that's been the focus of, of government entities, is trying to get that funding level up, so.
Let's actually show a little higher here, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none other, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Call for a vote, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item three A is to consider approving the ordering of a two thousand and eighteen Pierce enforcer pumper from Conrad Fire Equipment at a cost of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and three dollars after applied credits purchased through the HGAC by, by program in accordance with state statutes. That's from the Houston-Galveston Area Council, as recommended by the fire chief. Our chief, you want to speak to that for a second? Tell us about your new thing you want to get here.
Right, yeah, this, this new engine will be replacing our current engine two, which is our primary response vehicle out of station two. It responds on all medical and hazard, hazardous materials in that area caused. And then it also responds on all the fires and all the car wrecks within the whole city limits. So this truck runs quite a bit. Our current engine two is a two thousand and nine, it's got sixty-three thousand miles with approximately fifty-five hundred engine hours. So this new pumper would, would replace that one.
Okay, what happens to the old one?
It would be traded in. We have a quoted trade-in value of it.
So that's a trade-in value on buying a new one?
Yeah.
Hundred seventy-five thousand.
A thousand, okay.
Yes.
Pretty decent trade.
And we will hold on to that until, it takes about a year to get this.
Yeah, they'll, they'll let us run this truck until our new truck comes in and still give us that value.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and second, is there any other discussion?
I get, I have one question because I'm an attorney, so what happens if that truck gets in a wreck in the next year? Is it insured? Do we get our hundred seventy-five thousand? I guess that's, so I guess it's insured, Jim.
The truck's insured.
It, this is the agreement they got and then we got a little bit of discount to pay a little bit early. We approved the financing to the truck earlier. And then we now have this, this is through a state contract or similar type agreement that we legally can buy. And, yeah, if it's a wreck, our agents will fix it and we still get the hundred seventy-five.
Okay, just want to make sure that if something happened to it, we're still in good shape, okay?
One last question, if I remember correctly, it's been a while, but this was in our budget.
Yes, I think.
Right, we, we brought this financing to you a few weeks ago, if you recall, and then we have to actually bid the truck, approve the financing.
Right, but I think you had this figured in the last year's budget, yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of April the third, two thousand and eighteen, B, payment of material claims in the amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, C, designating the items from the attached list from the technology department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, and D, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for May the first, two thousand and eighteen, seven P.M. The council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item two is the reports of boards and commissions and city officials. Mr. Crosby.
No reports to see, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to make a comment on the, well, I'll wait till we get down further. Item three, acceptance of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item four is to consider approving payment of three hundred and one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars, forty-two cents to Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC pursuant to funds received from the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority for the work on the well, twenty-four inch well field line location as a part of the OTA Utility Relocation Agreement approved by the Yukon City Council in October of two thousand and seventeen, using unit bid pricing under the two thousand and seventeen concrete and asphalt paving drainage, water, and sewer project contract as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item five is to consider accepting the permanent easement from Carson Corner LLC et al., part of the Yukon Master Trails Phase One along Cornwell Drive, a strip piece or parcel of land lying in the part of the northeast quarter section, of section twenty, Township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, on twenty-four West Main Street, known as parcel number four. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item six is to consider accepting the permanent easement from John C. O'Hare, part of the Yukon Master Trails Phase One abutting Cornwell Drive, a strip piece or parcel of land lying in part of the northeast quarter of section twenty, Township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, three twenty Cornwell Drive, known as parcel number one. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I guess I just, Jim, for the people who maybe don't know, can you remind us what these two items are?
Part of the grant that we have, the trail between us and Oklahoma City that connects us to Overholtzer. Our portion is a ten-foot multi-use trail for bikes, you know, runners, walking. So this is two easements that we needed to complete that, to start that process with ODOT. This is one that's been going on for several years, as you know, so.
And this eventually look, it's clear up to Lake Hefner, right?
It connects to the trails, will take you up to Hefner and as well as downtown, the south loop. So it connects us to the Oklahoma City Trail System.
And then, south and then north, okay.
So this, oh, I'm sorry.
This is one piece of one, you know, the, that we've been working on for multiple years.
Does this finalize all the easements?
This finalizes the easements for this trail.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to remind people.
All right.
I'm happy.
Okay.
That's what I like.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Thank you. Vote please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Item seven is to consider entering into a general service agreement with Lon Pro of Oklahoma City, Fabian Velasco, for abatement services for development services for the remainder of the fiscal year seventeen dash eighteen and the contract period of April the sixth, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item eight is to consider entering into a general service agreement with Mike Bullard, brush hog mowing for abatement services for brush hog mowing only for development services for the remainder of the fiscal year seventeen eighteen and the contract period of April the sixth, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Item nine is new business, do we have any new business this evening, Mr. Shivers?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Before I go to, Ms. Yanda, Jim, did you want to comment about the fact that our, I know we mentioned it during the audit, but that we did have a chance to bring our reserves up and everything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, and one of the things we've started working on several years ago, and our pool cash is what we normally pay off, is what we pay all of our bills out of, and we've been having a balance in that account previously, it was very low, and most right now today, we have a little over six million dollars in that particular account, very happy to have that. One of the things we got in our formulary report in the audit, it talked about the cash position of the city and its ability to pay its bills is exceptional, we're in real good shape in that area. The reserve account that I know that two council members, Russell and I know Mr. Albert, is very concerned about, when I came on board, it was to get that back up to the five million dollars that we previously had in that account, which is almost down to zero at one time, and we're previously, we have to be twenty-five percent of the general fund. We're a little over that right now, we have a little over five point six million dollars in our reserve account, and it's still growing a little bit, so we're very happy to have that and feel that the city is on real solid financial ground at this time.
Thank you, sir. I think it was important because the audits and everything that we do are actually from ten months ago, and certainly, we've had a pretty good run this year, and I think it's important to let all of the citizens know that. With that, we'll start the council discussion with Councilwoman Yanda.
Well, I just want to thank Jim and his staff for the, the work that they've done as far as our financials. We've come a long way, and it's, our financials in Yukon are looking great, and it's just a real comfort to us and the citizens of Yukon. And then I want to thank John and Richard for your service and dedication to the city of Yukon. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with each of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Smaestra?
I also want to thank John and, and Russell to have worked with you several years, and you've really helped the whole city and even part of us too. So, anyway, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Councilman Russell?
Well, like I said earlier, I'd like to thank all the citizens for just allowing me to do this. I would like to thank the entire city, the city council, for helping me through this, because it's no easy task. Lot more involved than you'd ever dreamed. But we made it through it, we've got our goals back up where we want, I'm very pleased, and I'm glad to be going out on a good note, just thank you all again.
Councilman Alberts?
A few things, the master trail plan, I'm always thrilled to see that we continue to grow as a city and, and to exercise and move, and I think that that's important as we continue to go forward, that we continue to be a mobile city, that we build sidewalks, that we encourage people to go to the park and do things like that. Early on, and through this entire process, the one line in the budget that seems to go up the most almost every year is healthcare costs. The reason healthcare costs go up so high is because a lot of times that our health is not the best here in Oklahoma. And I think that a little bit at a time, that we can chip away on that and prove, and improve, and I mean, just here locally, by doing some of the small things, by building these trail, trails encouraging kids to get out and play and participate, ride their bike, participate in outdoor activities, I think that's very important. So I, I appreciate that we're working on that, and in the same vein, down at the community center, I think I was in sixth grade when that opened, and I think that would have made it nineteen seventy-six, if I recall correctly. Hayden Karn was not happy with me because I was the first one to ever spill Coke on the pool table, when it was a brand-new pool table. But I know that it's a great building and lots of fun, and a lot of kids and adults have grown up going there and doing things, and Jim, I'm so happy to see that we're spending some time and some money. They are currently remodeling the kitchen, redoing the entryway, and doing things to continue to make that place just a vital, important part of our community, so thank you for that. And then, I always try to give a shout-out, I, tonight, I just have to give a shout-out to the entire city staff and the people that have helped over the time that Richard and, and we've been working, especially this last, you know, few years. There were some hard decisions, but we worked together, we moved forward, we made the decisions that we thought were the best at the time, and I'm, I'm thrilled that Jim was able to tell us tonight that, you know, there's five million dollars back in that account. And like for you, some of you guys that don't know, the, the reserve account is here, if, if there was some tragedy that hit the city, I mean, if there was a tornado that came through and wiped out Walmart, Walmart and Target, then there's a big, huge part of our revenue source that goes away. Well, that, that five million dollars is used to replace that income. So that's why it's so important that that reserve is there, and we voted on that many years ago when I was first on the council to take and set that aside and help also to, to fund police and fire, that's, you know, we're here buying fire trucks and I say, so that's why that's important, to make sure that that money is always there, and Jim, thank you for getting it back. I'm thr- I didn't think it'd be here tonight when I was leaving, I thought, you know, maybe you'd be halfway, so. I really appreciate that a lot. Again, and just thank you, I, to my, to my wife, my son, you know, they, lots of night, I missed out on doing some different things to come and be here, because I thought it was important here in the community, so I wanted to say thank you to them. And then, just like to you guys that are here for Mr. Andrews' class, is that why you're here? Okay, well, thanks for coming, and it matters, a long ti- when I first started, there was a Cub Scout, and he came and he said, "Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, why do you want to be mayor?" And I said, "Well," you know, I thought for a second, I said, "Because I think that every person has a responsibility to make the world a little better than they found it." So I hope that I've done that. Always get a little choked up, because I care, but anyway. You guys are our next set of leaders, thanks for coming and being here tonight. Sorry, I didn't, I, I'm so proud of myself that I made it clear to the end, because there's some onion under, there was onion under my nails for what I was eating, so, thank you, and thank you to the council, I'm done, sorry.
Thank you, John. I also will echo for both John and Richard, it's been my pleasure for certainly the last four years and really the last six, to have their expertise and, and the fact, and, and their firmness in, in the decision-making process to help us be the people that we can be. And I think I'd never thought I'd say something like that, but
We're back.
The financials in this town are back to where we're looking forward to a really, really good year, going out and doing things like improving our community center, our library system. Yukon is a absolutely great place to be. With that, seeing no other business before the council.
Don't you love Yukon?
Go Red. We're adjourned.